It is now final. You ready?
I'm ready, gentlemen.
Ready.
You all ready over there?
Call. Italian.
You ready? All right, we're gonna call the, uh, special meeting for Tuesday, July twenty-sixth to order. If you would silence your cell phones. Couple of things. First of all, I gotta point out the elephant in the room, which is, uh, my lack of a suit code up here. Normally, when we have these special meetings, we take it a little more casual, but I guess we all interpreted this meeting differently because we have suit tie, suit no tie. We have, you know, Sunday brunch, whatever I'm wearing. I don't know. So anyway. The second is that I'm finding dual ear infections at the moment. So if I'm yelling, I apologize. If I can't hear you, my apologies. Gentlemen, if you, if you speak and I don't acknowledge it, please give my attention some other way because I genuinely may just not hear it. Because right now it feels like I'm in a swimming pool at the moment. So don't fly with a head cold is the lesson learned. All right, with that, city clerk, if you'd call the role, please.
Mayor Owen.
Here.
Vice Mayor McGurk.
Here.
Commissioner Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner Clody.
Present.
Commissioner Sax.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, first item up. So this is a special meeting. As you all know, we've got a couple of things. One is the trim, which will set the maximum millage that we, uh, that we will be, uh, that we would, uh, impose. It can always go down. It can't go above what we set today. This isn't the final approval of the budget. This isn't the final approval of anything in the budget. This is just saying, based on where we're at today, this is the maximum millage we would charge. And then we go through a series of a couple of other public hearings where that rate can go down, may or may not, but it cannot go above what we set today. So the first four or five items are all basically related to that and some of the other things with, uh, with millage. So if you're here to talk about the budget or any of those items, you can just do that during public participation. And then the other is, uh, there's a couple of things that some of you may be here for. That's the noise, uh, the noise and light ordinances. Those are, all of these are actually public hearings. So you can speak to them at that time or you can just address us during public comment if you want to get on with your day. So that's, uh, that's what we've got on the agenda for today. So, uh, with that, that's your chance for public participation. So if you'd like to address the commission, as I said, you can do so now or you can do so during the public hearing. My only request is don't, don't do both. We'll hear you either way. So that was your chance. Come ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Phil Hall. You may recognize me as we are promoting new pickleball courts in the city of New Smyrna Beach. It's come to my attention that, uh, there has not been good communication on my part as to what we'd actually like to achieve. So this evening, you have on your desk a conceptual drawing of what proposed six pickleball courts would look like. We're looking at the area of city land out off Glencoe Road. Pickleball courts should not be, uh, annoying to the neighbors. We are remote from neighbors out there. They won't be bothered by the noise or the traffic. As you can see on the drawings, the idea is to have six pickleball courts, a parking area and a pavilion. Now, we understand that there are going to be additional needs, lavatories, restrooms. We would encourage that preliminary work at the time of the construction of the courts would include wiring for future light stanchions. It's not going to be an inexpensive project. So putting lights off for two years, three years, until the pickleball club can help finance those would be very realistic. Restrooms. Many, many courts in communities all over the country are using porta potties rather than the expense of installing complete washroom facilities at the time of construction. Porta potties work and it's not unusual for pickleball players nationwide to use those until there's money raised for actual washrooms. There's twelve plus acres of city land out there, I believe, that we would like to use one acre of. If you look at the back page, the yellow section on the back page represents one acre of land. So we're not, it's not going to be necessary to clear the entire twelve acres in order to provide the six pickleball courts. Again, the expenses to build the initial six pickleball courts, a pavilion and a parking lot will be done as a minimum. One of the things, though, I would please ask everyone to consider is don't cut corners in the preparation for the grounds for the courts. That's happened in other areas. Sadly, it's happened here. And two years after courts are built, the courts are cracking, sinking and wobbling. If the preparation is paid for correctly and done correctly and insisted to be done correctly, the court maintenance on pickleball courts is almost zero. Pickleball clubs will pay for new nets. Pickleball clubs will pay for wind screens. Pickleball clubs pick up the trash around the courts. So the maintenance on pickleball courts really will, once they're done, be a minimal expense in the future in the city. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Yes, sir.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm part of the pickleball club. From my understanding, there's been some preliminary allocation in the budget, uh, proposed for, uh, new courts. So I want to thank the, the city for doing that. It's a big step. As you know, actually, we only have five courts in the entire city. There's, uh, three over at Live Oak. There's two at Pettis Park. The, uh, city gym does have some inside. Demand has just exploded within the city alone. It's, it's amazing. I know, uh, this morning, one of my colleagues was playing over at the city gym. Said there were forty-five people there for three courts just waiting. It's, it's that big. It's that popular. The, uh, Live Oak Courts over by, uh, the library, very busy, three courts there, often a big waiting time. Frequently, or I typically play over at Pettis Park, there's two courts. There are times when, um, in the fall and in the winter, there's up to forty people there for two courts. It's just, it's amazing. It's, it's crazy, the growth that it's gone on. So there's the wait time, the, the demand for these type of facilities. Without a doubt, it's there, it's here. So with the, the, you know, allocation that you've at least proposed for the budget to, to build these courts, you've got the land, you've got the money, you've got the desire. And I want to thank the city for really taking that big step. I really appreciate it.
Sir, may I please have your name?
Yes, Michael Tierney.
What was that?
Tierney.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Rob Stevens and I just want to approach in the condition of what the actual benefits of this game have been for me as a personal player. I'm certainly not a professional. I'm not getting paid to do this. But luckily, I retired a few years ago from the inspector general's office up in Tallahassee. And what was I gonna do with the rest of my life? Well, we all have the same thoughts and travel. But when we relocated to New Smyrna Beach, my weight was three hundred and twenty-five pounds. Since then, I've lost ninety pounds and that's solely due to certainly pickleball. But also this year, I participated in the mayor's health challenge and lost another twenty pounds. It's a simple health aspect. But what else is pickleball bringing to our community is beyond that. Socially, everybody that plays this game says the same thing. You know, the best part about it is that we meet a lot of people. I've met incredible amounts of wonderful, caring people. So when you think that the world's going crazy, when you think there's no way that we're all ever gonna get along again, come on out to a pickleball court and you will see hundreds of people from all walks of life, all political aspirations, all having a great time. The overall aspect for me certainly has been health. I would encourage anybody to utilize the game for that. But the social aspect, and, and not only that, when we leave our sport, we go to breakfast, we go to lunch, we go to dinner, all in these restaurants. We shop on Flagler at the wonderful store that offers great pickleball products. We shop in all these stores that offer any shoes, socks. I can tell you Bell's Outlet is making a killing as well, because we play a lot, as are our local doctors, chiropractors, orthopedics. Uh, I've been to a lot of them as well. Very healthy and also it's, it's a great concern for me that more people can get, whatever it is that you find that you love, golf, tennis, pickleball, hiking, uh, that's it. But we found as a large group of people, as you can see, something that we all love and we thank you for your time and, and hearing us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, hello, everybody. Frank DeMarkey, Flagler Avenue Business Association. I'm not here for pickleball, but I-
How dare you?
Love a pickleback with my chain of service. So yes, I'm up for it. I'm actually here to talk to you about the noise issue and the idea of maybe changing some of the news, noise ordinances and rules. On behalf of our business association, we want to first thank you for all the support that you've done for us and your ability of including us in the process on whatever things that are coming up, like zoning, like loading zones and things like that. And as a merchant association, we hope that that tradition continues and that our stakeholders and our, that I represent are able to play a, a role in that process as well. So, um, wanted to thank you in advance and hope that we're included on whatever you're considering changing when it comes to the noise awareness. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. I normally don't let crowds clap because then they start booing and then it goes, you know, it starts to devolve. You all seem pretty friendly. Everybody seems like we're agreeing on everything, so. But just be cautious. All right, yes, ma'am.
Yes, please don't boo me.
Just don't disagree with pickleball. I think you're okay.
Yeah, well, I don't play pickleball yet, but I will. After all this, I'm playing pickleball.
Yeah.
But I'm actually-
You got a few friends?
I'm actually, uh, I'm sorry. My name is Deborah Crane. Do you need my address or anything or? I live, and Jason, I've talked several times to you. I live across the street from the concrete plant that makes a huge amount of noise, a huge amount of dust. And I feel that changing the noise ordinance is gonna be a hardship on me and all my neighbors. I'm not quite sure because I just found out about this and I don't understand why the neighbors are not giving notice to the meetings. Number one, uh, we all live there, so we should know when these meetings are gonna occur and we do not get noticed. We did not get noticed when the concrete plant moved in, which we would have obviously protested that because it has caused a lot of issues. I've had three neighbors move already because of it. I'm trying to sell my house and unfortunately, I got to be the, the one that lives right across the street from the noise and the mess. The houses that are on Fremont, really, they did get the noise, but they don't get it like I do. My house shakes. My car is filthy all the time. My yard is filthy all the time because of that. And I know that you did this, the little testing thing and it came back and said that the railroad made more noise than they do. That's not correct. I live there every day. I hear them every day from six to, to eight or six to five, whatever the case may be. They're working on Saturdays now. Not all of them work on Saturdays, but some of them do work on Saturdays. So, um, I know that they try to say that the dust was contributed to our dirt road. Well, then that could be fixed. Y'all can pave my road anytime. I'll, I'll be glad to let you pave my road. I don't know why it's still a dirt road, but hey, I knew it when I moved there, so I had no problem. The place that was across the street from me when I moved in there was, they, they made statues. They didn't make all this noise. Now, unfortunately, because the concrete plates moved in there, it's constant all day long, noise, noise, noise. And especially when they're actually crushing it. My house, once again, because it's directly across the street, I even get shaking. I have no idea if it's doing anything to my foundation or anything because, you know, I have carpet down, I have concrete down, I have flooring down, so I can't see that. But, uh, when people come over to my house, the first thing they ask is, what is that across the street? And why is there so much noise? So I hope that you're going to, if you do, make a change. You make a change to where they have to tone it down, not be able to tone it up. And thank you for my time, for your time, brother.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sandy Seacamp and I'm representing the Colony Condominiums where, uh, the tennis and golf, uh, store is located, which perhaps many of you frequent. And, um, I'm here also to talk about the noise ordinance. I live on Flagler Avenue. I love Flagler Avenue and I love New Smyrna Beach because it's a family-friendly town and that's the way we all would like to see it kept. So I'm also concerned about the noise ordinances. We have, I live right across the street from Traders, just to give you, you know, to let you know. I knew Traders was there when I lived, when I moved in. I love Traders. But, you know, from time to time, it gets really loud with music on Flagler Avenue. And right now, things are tolerable. I'm good with it. I just hope that all of you will keep the noise ordinances on Flagler Avenue down. You've seen what's happened in the past when we've had large gatherings of people outside on Flagler Avenue, a lot of them very young people. And they have caused some problems and we don't want to see that happening again. So if you do change the ordinances, I'm asking you to please postpone the vote on that so that you can have some more input from the people that actually are down there residents. And I think nobody in this room wants to change Flagler Avenue and make it louder than ever. So I'm, I'm confident that this group will help us make sure that our, our noise ordinances stay the way they are, which are acceptable to everybody. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any others for public participation? All right. Seeing none, we'll close public participation. Wanted to come back to two things real quick just to, uh, for everybody else's benefit that may not know some of the full story. On noticing, you know, we get that a lot. You know, hey, I didn't know this was happening. So not to call anyone individually because we, we get that a lot. In this particular case, uh, it's a citywide ordinance. So the notice goes citywide and that's how we're all here is that, you know, everyone got the notice this was happening via the website, et cetera. So, uh, the things that require notices for like adjoining properties or things like rezoning or something like that, we go usually above and beyond or things. We did it, uh, last, I forget what it was, maybe the, the, uh, the Habitat Homes. I think we, we said we sent notices out above beyond what was required. But it's really, really tough. So I, I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you've tuned in. I'm glad you somehow learned about this. We do all the legal notices we're required to and then we go above and beyond that. And the same kind of applies to how that, you said you didn't get a notice when the, when that property changed the business use. And again, that, that never came to us either. That was just a, a one property, one business sold the other. Both were permitted. It'd be like if Burger King sold to McDonald's, that doesn't come back to us. They just changed the name outside and started doing business as long as both are permitted uses. It doesn't, you know, there was no chance to protest it. I didn't get a chance. You didn't get, no one got a chance, if you will, to, to, to fight that, to fight that because it was within permitted use. Doesn't change necessarily that, I'm not saying that makes it good. You know, there, there are challenges in that site. We've all been out there and visited and I certainly have sympathy for the neighbors in that area. But just wanted to, to clarify that. And then I hope that some of you will stick around for the rest of this as we talk about the noise ordinance later in the agenda. So with that, uh, the first item up is the, um, the, uh, budget. So we've got kind of three or four different items. I think we're basically gonna have one presentation that kind of covers everything. We'll have some discussion after that and then we'll just take each one as a series of votes. So I'll turn it over to Kyle and Natalia.
Mayor, commissioners and everybody, audience, thank you for coming today. So today is important meeting. We are, we, we need to set maximum tentative mileage rate for the upcoming fiscal twenty twenty-three.
Is it on? Sometimes a little button on the side. Flip it up on the side.
It was working before I checked.
May not have a line of sight to the-
You will do it? Okay.
Okay. All right. I, I think we all have it here and I think there was copies there if anybody in the audience wanted it. So just go ahead and she'll get it flipped over here.
So city budget overview for twenty twenty-three. So we're proposing the budget of ninety-six million point nine. So it's, uh, for comparison, last year was eighty-six million point eight. So city growing, we definitely see increase in that. So that budget, uh, includes capital equipment, two point two million dollars. Capital outlay projects, seventeen point nine million. Also, our list of projects include, uh, projects that will be financed with American Rescue Plan, the one which was approved by City Commission, um, a month ago. So we have a big increase also in our personnel. This year, we're trying to address our issue with compression, which we had for some time. And usually it's issue which not new to any other municipalities. Over time, it's growing and this year we're really kind of taking a strong approach to it. Also benefits, and, uh, this year we were able to sign contracts with our unions, which will be effective October first, twenty twenty-two, in a three-year contracts. So all of these negotiations were done in June, May-June this year. So citywide budget also for government funds, general fund, it's forty million dollars. That includes General Fund, Brennan Center and Golf Course. So this year staff proposing three point nine six four one mil, uh, tax rate, which is increased from current three point seven four two one, which is point two 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 increase or five point nine three percent. Rollback this year is three point three seven two zero. And this year, we also have to address solid waste rate because that fund is, uh, getting short due to the fact that Waste Pro is by contract increasing, the services what we pay by four percent every year, but we do not address it on our customer base. So basically, we have to stay in sync with that. So that graph, citywide budget, shows relationship between citywide budget and our city debt. Our city debt about thirty million dollars now. And so basically, as you see, over time, we staying somewhat consistent. Of course, it's always better see less, but considering amount of the projects and initiatives we have, but overall, we're in a good shape. We able to meet all our obligations. So this chart shows historical, uh, ten years back, our rollback versus final mileage. As you see, each year, we basically always have to go over because with our expenses and with demands of the city and being one of the lowest, um, tax rate in the county, we always have to really go a little bit over rollback. And as you see, that goes back to two thousand fourteen. The chart, uh, was taken from property appraisal office. Just shows, uh, not much change from last year. So of course, our residential base is the highest, eighty-three point three percent. And we have, of course, other kinds of properties. And I know we, this commission works hard to bring, uh, commercial, industrial, and hopefully, we will see more other kind of properties in the future. So that chart, you already seen it in my previous presentation in June. Again, so general operating, we proposing three point nine four, no, three point nine six four, which is increase from current. On long-term debt, which is voted debt, uh, two series of our general obligation bonds. We have decreased because taxable value increases, but, uh, we able to meet our debt obligation with, um, point two one seven six for two thousand five debt and point one one three zero for two thousand eighteen. So total city mileage, we proposing four point two nine four seven. So that chart is also from previous presentation. We added two scenarios to it. So as you see, year one shows we will be short almost half a million dollars if we, basically, if we don't address the issue in year two. So if we want break even in year two, which is fiscal twenty-three, we have to increase, um, by ten point seven two, um, percent to our customer base. But over the year five, we still not reaching break even point as you see. So the plan we proposing would be eleven point seven five increase in year two and then four percent CPI increase, uh, in years three, four and five, which is very normal in the industry. A lot of these contracts that usually tie to CPI.
Remind me, because these numbers all sound like a lot, but the solid waste is, what is this charge per month? It's like twenty-one something per month, right? Or?
Yeah, I have, I have the-
Twenty-one forty-three?
No, actually, I have these numbers. So I know eleven points-
What was that? Twenty-three fifty? Is the current? Okay.
So it's close. My calculation, it's twenty-nine point, so twenty-one, twenty-nine dollars, eighty-one cents for a year or two dollars, forty-eight dollars per month.
So it's a, so yeah.
Right.
This increase would be somewhere around thirty dollars for the whole year.
Right, for the whole year. I know it sounds a lot, but it's really, when you talk about amount, it's not that significant.
Just wanted to give that context because, I mean, obviously, it's big as a percentage and, you know, every dollar matters, but, so, okay, continue.
Yeah, and last year we had an increase, actually. I believe it was in two, uh, twenty seventeen, it was ten percent.
Okay.
So since then, and we're talking about twenty twenty-three, we did not have increase since.
So we have an increase for five years. Okay.
So this graphic shows, uh, what homeowner pays in city of New Smyrna. And we took real median home here with taxable value, assessed taxable value of two hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. So, um, so basically, Volusia County, we, so this total bill about, I want to say forty-three hundred dollars for a year. And it's really shows, uh, how different taxing authorities, what they get. Volusia County gets thirty-six percent. School Board, thirty-three. Other has seven. Volusia County gets thirty-six percent, school board thirty-three, other has seven. And New Smyrna gets only twenty-four percent of the total bill or one thousand twenty-three dollars. So basically this commission, you only responsible for twenty-four percent of revenue on that tax bill. And also I did additional calculations, basically for every hundred thousand dollars of assessed value, for hundred would be sixteen dollars increase, for two hundred would be thirty-three dollar increase per year. So if we will calculate based on the proposed mileage rate, that's one we're looking at now. For this home, uh, it's close to what, two fifty, it would be a little bit over forty dollar increase on annual basis on your tax bill. Uh, this is general fund revenues. As I said, we proposing forty million point six. And this is our, you know, very typical, what general fund to generate. Uh, our property tax revenue have fifty-one percent of total revenue, which is very normal. And as you see by the chart, next would be other source, uh, other sources, which is a lot. It's our grants, um, list continues. Uh, charges for services, utilities commission, the one that six percent they pay us based on their revenue. Uh, state sharing revenue, it sells taxes. Um, so that's how that forty million dollars we get. That shows our expenditures in general fund and, uh, public safety is our, uh, major. It's forty percent, which is understandable, very normal for any municipality. Uh, general government eighteen percent, building maintenance twelve. So basically our typical expenditures, um, again, uh, forty million dollars. So this comes directly from your budget book. Uh, again, it's ninety point six nine. So that's we proposing. And also just to bring your attention, last year adopted budget was eighty-six point eight million dollars and amended. So all these amendments will come to you almost every time. At this point of time, we have hundred point one million dollars, that's what accounted for. So.
And that's because of grants and ARPA, things like that.
Right. And also every time we, let's say we have a reserve in fund balance, when we have to release that, it requires budget amendment. So this is our capital equipment request, all funded. Um, again, um, same list as was provided before, it should be in your budget book. Almost every department, uh, request some type of equipment. It's typical, uh, we have to operate, it's a lot of, um, demands. So from general fund, um, again, almost every department in general fund, uh, requested something. Total is two point two million dollars. So this list has capital outlay request, again, your budget book has it. Uh, and as you see on the right funding column, it shows where the money will be coming from, what the source of that funding. And as you see, it's, it's combination of general fund, depending what fund we have. If it's airport, it's a lot of FAA, FDOT. So we trying very hard to find more granting opportunities each time. And, uh, basically that's what findings are. And, uh, as you see on the list, AOB parking, I know that commission put it on waiting list on the hold for now uh, because of the amount. We did not change it because, um, we don't know when that will be.
If you recall, we applied for, uh, the docking at, uh, through fine. So we kind of keep this, uh, in the budgets to offset some of the, uh, our cost sharing.
The matching, okay.
And again, for first public hearing, we will be doing more revisions when we have more information. So that list probably will change just a little bit. So next list, um, again, you see the projects, um, Barakuda Bridge on the which one we're talking about, Historic West Side. And as you see, uh, three of the project are funded by American Rescue Plan, Corbien Park, Historic West Side and Road Surfacings. And pickleball, by the way. Okay, this is our last page of capital projects. Um, the list, so there are three project I would like to give you more information. One is building addition on fire station fifty-three, which we asking half a million dollars. So that project might be removed from here because for the August nine, you will have on agenda item. So fire department will be asking to purchase a house, basically for that purpose they need to have. And it will be funded by impact fees. So that project might be going away for first public hearing. Also two sidewalks, Seven Street Sidewalk and South Street, uh, funded by a bond. Um, we already started project on it. Uh, I know it's in a, I want to say it's under design. I looked at it. Out a bit. So I believe we already spent seventy thousand dollars on it. Um, and that also might change. So we might be able to do it this year, but we left it there until further, we have more information.
Just, just keep in mind, uh, mayor too, that these two sidewalks, it's the funding coming out of a bond. So it's not out of general fund like the expansion of the fire station.
So total for capital outlays, seventeen point nine million total for all capital proposed, twenty-one point two million dollars. So summary, so we proposing, staff proposing mileage of three point nine six, three point nine six four one. That service mileage point two one seven six, point one one zero three. Trim notice due to the Department of Revenue of State of Florida on August fourth. And our, uh, budget workshop is scheduled for August eighteen. That one you will have a chance to listen to our directors. And we will go in more detail for each department budget. We don't know schedule yet by, but it, we have to work on it.
Okay. Mayor, if I may, before we go into the, just I want to, um, say a few things, uh, regarding the budgets. Um, I think the last thing for any city manager, uh, that is going to go before a city commission to increase the mileage. But, um, we have maintained, uh, a low mileage for such a long time that, uh, I don't think at this point we could continue with having the mileage where it's at. There are so many factors going to this. Uh, number one factor, she mentioned about the three contracts for the union. That has significant financial impact on this budget. The second thing is, um, the minimum wage, the fifteen dollars. As you know, that by year twenty-six, we have to have the fifteen dollars, uh, as a minimum wage. I think we're one of the few cities that have not got to the fifteen dollars. So in this budget, there is fifteen dollars an hour. The other factor is the escalating costs and across the boards in terms of providing the service. Now, if we are asking to provide the services and improve the services to the citizens of New Smyrna Beach, I don't think that we could maintain at the same level in terms of the mileage at this point. We have been utilizing a grants throughout agencies. I mean, I'm talking about each department. If you look at the grants that we have received from different agencies, I mean, it's in the millions. Um, without that, I don't think we could even do some of the projects that we have done already. We've utilized the ARPA funds, uh, in some of these project to offset the cost. So you have the list of the ARPA funds, so we have did, uh, offset some of the cost. So, um, it's, it's kind of kills me to ask for increase of mileage, but I think looking at down the road, we cannot continue the way we are. I mean, you look at the solid waste, uh, funds, that's exactly what happened. At this point, we have to increase it by eleven point seven five just to break even. So if we continue like this, I think what's going to happen down the road, that it's going to be a big hit. So that's why we wanted to do it incrementally and get to the point where we providing the services we wanted to provide to the city of New Smyrna Beach. So would be that, uh, we'll be happy to answer any question that you might have on the budgets.
Okay. Uh, can you go back Kelly to this slide? It says property taxes, it's like the fifth or sixth slide in maybe. Um, so I got a couple of comments and then we'll just kind of come down the line and then we got to make motions on all these things. So, uh, one more backup, I think, uh, one more. That one. So first is this notion of rollback. And there was actually a great article, I wish everyone could read it. Um, I think it was in the Beacon or something, it was in that thing we get every day, uh, where someone kind of explained rollback and where that came from and how, you know, I've talked about this at the state of the city before. Rollback is an unattainable goal over time. I mean, it's a, it's a decent measuring stick that governments are held accountable to. But when you really dive in and understand what rollback represents, it says, we collect the same revenue from the same folks, uh, as we did the year before. So that means that if you've lived here twenty years, you would pay the exact, that, that all the people that lived here for twenty years would be paying the exact same cumulative tax, those, that group of however many people it is that had been in those houses for twenty years, they would pay exactly the same net total taxes today that they paid twenty years ago. I'd love to do that. I'd love to be paying for anything, what I paid even a year ago, but we're not in that environment. So rollback, comparing anything to rollback is, you, you know, I, I caution you against that again. It's a good measuring, it's a good benchmark, it's a good measuring stick, uh, but it's not sustainable over long term. So you're never going to be able to do that. So then you look at a graph like this and you say, is this a fair increase, uh, for the goods and services that are provided by the city in the, in the operating environment that we're in? And like I've said before, we are a large giant corporation operation, uh, that, that buys a little of everything on a daily basis. Fuel, we have employees, we have to deal with a, a new minimum wage that was put in place. We have, we have a tremendous amount of, of things that are going up in price, just like they are for each of you. Uh, I, I hate to have to raise taxes, last thing anybody wants to do sitting on this stage. First of all, I have to pay them. I mean, we all live in the city, every single person, at least all the electeds, for sure, have an address in the city. So, um, you know, this, this isn't my ideal situation, but, so we could do nothing. We could, you know, fight to go back to, uh, you know, to, to rollback, which would never be achievable or to even where we're at today. Uh, but we're really just punting the problem, that, that's really the, uh, that's really the easy way out. And all that's doing is punting the problem to some future elected body because they would eventually have to address this, just like with solid waste. Right now, we're subsidizing solid waste and that's not sustainable. Um, so, you know, I'll, I'll pause there, we'll see where the rest of the commission goes. But we've, we've telegraphed this, we've discussed this ad nauseam, we've had numerous, uh, discussions about it. We had this, we had this today on August eighteenth, we have an entire full day workshop, which will be one of many that we've had. Um, and yet the only folks that showed up to speak today, and I know some of you are still here, you may, you may be here to, to contend with what I'm saying at the moment. But I think it was telling that the folks that showed up today were, they, they wanted something more. They, they weren't here to contest and say, well, hey, I really, I think I'm overpaying for living in New Smyrna Beach. They were here to say, hey, we, there's still goods and services or, or, you know, quality of life factors that we hope that you invest in. And that's what I hear. I, I, I go, I speak to a lot of groups, I take a lot of Q and A's. And, uh, never once have I had somebody say, I think I'm overpaying for where we're at. Instead, what I hear is, I hope you do what you got to do to keep us safe. I hope you continue to invest in our public safety. I hope you keep making our city nice. Um, and, and then they don't seem to be sweating the fifteen or sixteen or thirty or forty dollars a year, uh, that that might represent when it comes down to, to what we're talking here with a, a four percent total increase in mileage. So, um, so I, I think, I think Kyle had said it well, this isn't, you know, this doesn't make us more popular and we get that, we're not, we're, we're not dummies up here, we, we know that. But we also know what's the right thing to do. And I feel like this is the right thing to do, uh, at, at this point in time and where we're at in our city. And, and again, I feel like I haven't heard different from the general public in a, in a large way, so. Um, with that, gentlemen, my thought would be, let's each make some comments and then we'll just go through each of these resolutions, take some motions and, and move on, if that works for everybody. Rather than trying to make comments on every single one of these, because they're all basic things. Last thing, that'll be my last. Waste. Um, I, obviously we can't control what future commissions do. So, you know, we, we have that chart that shows kind of the, the forecast, but we're really just approving what we do this year. My thing, I don't want to hand a future commission in deficit. I think that's, that would be wrong on our part to hand a future commission in deficit. I would like to see us get to neutral this year. Sounds like a lot to do ten point seven two percent. It really is twenty-three dollars for the whole year. Um, I'd like to see us get to neutral for this year. And then hopefully future commissions can adopt a more sustainable trend of adding at a small CPI, which will equate to thirty or forty cents per year versus having this, you know, once every five years, we have to do a, a big ten percent jump. But that'll be for future commissions to decide. So I can support, I can support that ten point seven two percent for this year. Anybody else who would like to lead off? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I agree with you. I agree with pretty much everything you've said. Um, I can tell you that with the minimum wage increase, which was not done by us or a government body, but done by the constitutional amendments by the citizens of the state, are the ones who have increased minimum wage fifty percent in the next five years. And what that does is create compression. Doesn't matter if you're a minimum wage employee, it's going to affect you because other people being paid less than you are going to come up, which means you're going to want to come up. As a private sector employer, I have to deal with this. A fifty percent increase in minimum wage is unheard of. It's very difficult to sustain and be able to provide that. Um, and when I say I provide that, I'm not providing it, it's the citizens. The citizens vote for something, they want something. In the end, they're the ones who have to pay for something. I've heard, you've heard me all talk about the, uh, the tax rates here. We have historically been a blue collar working class town. You didn't pay anything, but you didn't get anything. Well, I can tell you that most of you have come for the last ten to twenty years, have fundamentally changed from the kind of, from what you either wanted in the past or what you want what, from the communities you have come from. You want a quality of life and a level of service that historically New Smyrna Beach has never provided. Why? Because we are the lowest, if not the second lowest tax city in the entire county. And we've always been that. We haven't changed that position the whole time I've been on the commission because that is where the citizens wanted us. However, I have seen the seismic shift of the citizens wanting amenities. They want landscaping, they want the little things that create a quality of life in this community. Beautiful community, that's why we're all here. But we have to be able to pay for the things that the people want to enhance this community. As you grow older or younger, we have skate parks for the kids, the pickleball courts is a wonderful example of how times change and demands come up. And we'd like to enhance our community with a, the fastest growing sport in the country. So I will tell you that most of our department heads are twenty to thirty percent underpaid. All of our employees are underpaid. And again, going back to that mileage, you know, one of the old sayings in this community was, hey, you may not get paid the most, but you get to live in New Smyrna. Well, that's great, that worked for a long time, but New Smyrna is too expensive for the most part for most people to be able to live in it who get paid lower than most other people in the same job in the, in different cities. So, um, I think we're tracking in the right direction. We're not asking for significant increases. This may bump us up one spot from number two to number three in the sixteen cities. We're still sitting at the bottom. It's a relatively small amount. Take your neighbors out for some cocktails and guess what? And that one little night, it will be more than what you're going to pay annually in the increase in taxes. However, that small amount will go a long way for us to be able to provide the quality of life and the level of service that you all are asking us for. So I support the mileage increase and I look forward to be able to fiscally responsibly spend your money. And funny thing is, we have to be incredibly fiscally responsible with your money because we don't get enough not to be. So look at it that way. We pinch pennies as much as we can and we fund everything we can with as many grants as we can possibly do. So you have my commitment that we will continue to spend your tax dollars as fiscally responsible as we have in the past. And I think we move forward and, 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 and mayor, I agree with you. And I think we move forward and, 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 and Mayor, I agree with you on the solid waste. That's the, 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 the middle, the 10-year, the middle option is, um, the best way to go on that. Thank you.
Ray? So, I agree with everything you guys have said, but keeping in mind, I think our biggest increase this year has been employee cost. And for everybody that, that's been out there or called, sent me an email, you know, why did you guys do this? Why aren't you watching this? Because we don't have staff. And we haven't had staff. Some positions haven't been filled for two years. We can't find staff. We're not paying enough to be competitive in the market, and when you get a employee that's been here five or six years and goes to Port Orange for $2 an hour, that kind of tells you something. So we need to be competitive in what we're paying our employees, so that we're providing the services and the goods that the residents are looking for, asking for, and truly deserve. So I support the millage increase, you know, for those reasons. The big point here is, is with those wages, is we've got all three unions under contract for three years. So we know what those costs are gonna be for the next three years. Those are fixed costs going forward. That gives us something that we can work worth in, in the following years, you know, maybe to trim down or kind of hold things there. But that's so important going into this, is that this is the year that, that we're gonna have to pay the piper. I mean, you know, we've been as lenient as we can for the last two or three years, I, it's, this has to be the year that we do that, and I think now's the time to do that. Again, you know, the increases, when you figure them out, your actual tax bill, aren't gonna be as big as they look like right, right here. As far as waste pro, I agree with you. Um, you know, either the 10% and the 4% in two and three, or the 11.75, I can go with either one of those, as long as we get out of the hole as quickly as we can and have some money in reserves. We know this from two years ago. We spent money for storm cleanup, you know, and that's, you know, so we, we have to be prepared for those times. And, you know, our reserve account isn't always gonna be able to cover that, and so, you know, we have to have some reserves even in, in these types of accounts. So I certainly support, um, you know, either those two, uh, for the solid waste, and I would support the millage increase at staff's recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Colodey? Come down that way.
This has been a very rough year for everybody out there, because of the inflationary trends that have been inflicted upon us by the federal government. I for one, do not want to contribute to additional cost having to be paid by our citizens. Addressing the waste removal, yes. We didn't fund it properly in the past and we do have to get back on track. That's gonna be an increase that's gonna come out of every one of our pockets. A stormwater is a relatively small increase, uh, which is kind of set by ordinance, so we just have to approve it. You get to the general fund is where I have a problem. Yes, we've, we've addressed our personnel in a responsible and respectable manner, and I will always provide, uh, our city funds to pay for those things we've agreed to. In my mind, it doesn't matter that the fed, that the state government has said we gotta go to $15 an hour, because we should have done it anyhow. Some of our employees were, uh, I don't know how they lived on, on $7 and $8 an hour. We increased it significantly last year and we're now increasing it through the unions by an even greater amount. Now, in addition to, uh, me blaming the federal government for the inflation and our additional costs that we pay for food, gas, and everything else that goes with it, they also gave us a significant amount of money in the way of the ARPA funds. We've used, uh, and dedicated a lot of that money to some of our capital improvement projects that would have had to been included in our general tax rate. It's my position that I don't want to see the millage rate to go any higher than what it is right now. We've replaced some of those, uh, capital projects with other funds, there's no reason why we can't honor all our labor commitments and take out some of the other, uh, you could call them wishlist projects. Uh, I've heard the pickleball, uh, contingent, very much like to, uh, have courts, which I have no, no problem with. We also have an item in there that I hope we can keep in there, for the skate park for half a million dollars. That's also a very large contingent of people who have been asking for years to have a facility that, uh, in my mind, is far, far below any of our standards. It's a FEMA trailer that was left over from one of our past hurricanes. So there are priorities. I like giving benefits to all of our citizens by not increasing the taxes at all. What the mayor said regarding the millage rate is absolutely correct. Just, uh, not millage, rollback rate. You can't go to rollback rate, that's, that's like, uh, turning around and walking away from your responsibilities. I've heard from some of my other commissioners and the city manager, how we just can't keep this low millage rate. We've managed to do it for about seven years straight. There's no reason why in a time when everybody's costs are going up, we can't do that, at least for one more year. Uh, there's also the, uh, I believe misconception that we're underpaying because our millage rate is low. Uh, I've, today even, talked to our county tax office. One of the reasons why we have a low millage rate is because our property values are so high. That's the number we should look at, how much per property everybody's really paying. And I think if that analysis was done, we'd find, we're not just eking by on a low millage rate, we're paying all of us our fair share. So I just can't support millage rate increase for the general. I'd like to see it lower and I'll, I'll task our, uh, our staff to look for ways to do that. Whether this increase or maximum possible increase is approved without my vote, I will look to them to, to seriously look into that issue and, uh, hopefully, we can keep the millage rate down. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sacks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Colin, I recall that you kind of nodded your head, yes, we can sharpen the pencil. I do not want to overburden the taxpayer with the salaries that our employees deserve. I hope that's simple enough to understand, but our employees desperately need a raise. What I see coming down the pike are higher insurance rates, inflation, everything is still going up. Gasoline hopefully going down, but not so much. I was looking at the number 3.74 myself, and I thought, boy, it'd be nice to stick closer to that number than to go up the .22% uh, to that higher millage. I'd really like us to show the public that we're trying as well, because I'll bet most households are really trying to juggle even $30 to $50 in that bi-weekly paycheck that they get. So with that in mind, I'm confident that you and, between you and Natalia and Shaliza, we can come up to something that we all could support. We almost seem already split, but maybe with a split like that, we can come to a, a good conclusion that's fair for our employees, especially for the residents, to not be overburdened by high taxes. Uh, I just want to add, I've been hearing mixed signals from the county, the counties, the state, uh, some are going to rollback, some are not raising taxes, uh, so it, it's kind of a mixed fare. I don't know where they have the money, I don't know where we have the money sometimes, but, um, I think we can get there to make everybody happy. Compromise sometimes is one that we can both walk away from happy. So that's all I have, guys.
Couple of things that, cause that, I don't disagree with anything that you all said. In the context of what I said, I don't disagree with what you said. I'd love to not raise taxes at all and sell out as a hero that never raised taxes, that 'd be fantastic. Um, to your last comment, the, the context of, you know, well, they went to rollback this year, well, let's look at the past four years, what did they do the past four years? Cause if they were constantly raising taxes while we were keeping it flat, then maybe that's why they're able to go to rollback now, is because they, they did this in years when we didn't. So I, I'd caution you, make sure we're apples to apples, when you look at the tax rate of us versus the county, we're considerably lower right now, millage. So if you own a $500,000 house, do, am I wrong on that, or?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'll pay attention.
The, the way you looked at that, uh, so, you know, if you own a $500,000 home in the county versus the city, you're, you're paying less in the city than you are in the county. So they may be able to go to rollback because they had already, you know, they were way ahead, and maybe they addressed some of these things many moons ago. I, I guess my, my question for, I'll direct it to Commissioner Colodey, since he kind of put the finest point on this. You know, you, you talked about wanting to stay at the 37421, which is what we're at now, acknowledging can't go to rollback, which we, I think we all agree with that. So the, the difference in those two numbers, I had staff run for me, that's 20.7 million in general fund revenue versus 19.5, so that's what, let's call it 1.2 million among friends. That's, I, I guess I'm struggling with what recurring expenses, we could, we could maybe slip out some, some capital funding. You, you listed probably the two biggest things honestly, that are kind of purely discretionary, the skate park, the pickleball. Uh, in this list of things that we were provided, what, what would, where would we start that? And, and what problem would it solve? Because as I look at it, I look at things like, alright, so let's say we don't buy this John Deere sprayer, or this, you know, this, uh, this new, uh, you know, whatever, some of these items, we're gonna need them, it's, it's not like they, they get new, like they get older. So we have staff, we've heard all the presentations, and they tell us that with many of these machines, the older they get, you know, we actually end up spending more than the price of the machine and maintenance and things like that. So I, I guess I'm struggling with having the same desire, how do we practically implement that? And I'm not willing to just turn to staff and say, well, that's your problem, go figure it out. Cause we approve all this. So I think, I think it's our problem. So I, I'm willing to have that discussion with you of where do we find 1.2 million? I think it has to be recurring money. Most of our expenses, we just approve these contracts for, I think unanimously. So I, I don't know, having that same desire, I just don't know where we get there. So help me understand what I missed and what your plan would be.
Can I interject real quick and ask a quick question?
Sure, go ahead.
It's the most important.
Yeah.
Um, these monies that we're gonna have to lay out expenditures for the new salaries, they don't all come at once to the employees. Can't they be spread out in time as to effectively help, help us not have to raise all that money at once? Do you understand where I'm coming from?
Yeah, but-
Since we don't, we're not paying the, the fireman, let's say, $100,000 right away, he's getting his salary over time.
Yeah, so we could, yes, but we, we raise the taxes, I mean, we could do a mid-year tax increase, and I guess we could do something super creative, but the, the notion is, is the recurring money, the minute you get a pay raise, if we raise your salary to, today from 80 to 100,000 a year, you, not that you're making 80, don't, don't leave that on next door. So if we were, but let's say you were one of our firefighters, you raise your salary from just making up a number, 80 to 100, we immediately, you know, your, your paycheck starts going up and we've gotta have the funds for that. So I mean, that, that maybe buys you a few months, I mean, you could maybe play that game. Corporations do that sometimes. It's a lot harder in the private sector, but, or, in the public sector, but corporations will occasionally do that, where they'll say, well, let's, you know, we're gonna do a six month price increase, and we're gonna do a six month pay, you know, we're gonna raise money, raise your pay 2% now and 2% later, but that's not how we negotiated it. So again, I don't see that as a permanent solution, that maybe buys you a few days or months, but it's not a permanent solution.
I would agree it's not permanent, it seems like no budget is ever permanent and the city's always changing. We just received half of $14 million, which could be a nice bump, that could get us over the hill. It would be the perfect time to do those things and not go to rollback. I'm not asking to go to rollback.
But that just, but we've, but we've had that debate when we got that money, we all agreed then, I thought we all agreed, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, that, that we were not going to task one-time funding. We're never getting ARPA money again. One-time funding, if, if I gave you a one-time bonus of $20,000 and you went out and signed up for a 30-year mortgage with that, that's poor financial planning, because you're gonna pay that mortgage for about two years and then you're gonna run out of money and, and how are you gonna pay it then? That's the equivalency of what we'd be doing if we used ARPA funding. So does it buy us a year? Yeah. We punt the problem to the next five people that are sitting on this stage, and then it's an even bigger problem. Then they're looking at probably a bigger increase, because then the launa and, 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 uh, the fire and the police, they're all back at the table, we've renegotiated, so we're, we're deeper in the hole, I feel like. And that, that's my challenge, yeah, we could buy ourselves a year by using ARPA money to fund recurring expenses versus one time, but I thought we all agreed that that wasn't the disciplined way to, to, to approach that, and that we would concentrate one-time monies on one-time things, which you see in this capitalist we have. So again, I want to go back and just ask, and I'm, I'm really not challenging, I'm genuinely just asking, because I'd love to support it if I could see a path, I just don't see the path.
Mayor, I'd like-
Well, wait a second.
Let me make a point to Commissioner-
No, I, I want to speak. I've been asked a question that I've been interfered with. I want to answer your question.
I did ask him that, no, I'll come back to you, I did direct it to him, so.
First of all, on the salaries, yes, I approved those increases in salaries and they were to a certain extent front-loaded, so there's more to pay next year. And I also understood at that time that we have to budget the money for it, which we will. It's the other areas, maybe the capital improvement money, maybe we have to look at our replacement schedules on maintenance. We just have to look a little bit further at it. We, during the whole COVID period and what followed it, whichever one you wanted to call it, our staff did not suffer. We did not cut back on any programs we could continue with, we kept all our employees, they were all treated very well, and I'm proud of that. So yes, I realize we have big, uh, increases in salaries, and that's good, because the service we get from our employees is great. We have an increase, I don't know whether it's the cause or the effect of it, in our police department, we're much more fully staffed than we've ever been. I see them out there all the time, I see them giving tickets, I see them patrolling, I'm glad to see things like that. While we're in charge of maintenance, we do maintain, we do it good. But if I have to come out and, and I realize that the actual dollar increase going to our residents is not gonna break many people's back, but it's that increment, the piling on between what we're charging people, what the government is charging, federal government and county are charging people, I don't want to be a part of that. I'm, I'm just simply not going to increase it over what we have right now. Uh, I don't know if that answered, oh, to answer your question directly, is we have a full one-day budget session, and I'll have proposals as to how to take that money out of there, and I hope the staff looks at it. I'm not, and I'm not gonna go line item through our full book, because I wouldn't know any better than a lot of our staff knows, but I've been in municipal governments before, uh, I've worked with budgets on them before, I'm well-prepared to make what I feel is the best way forward, which is what we want. I'm not going to stick our future commission and residents with huge increases because we neglected something, but we gotta take a careful look at what we're spending now.
Okay.
And we've had lots of presentations during the year, I've agreed in virtually everything, but we didn't get this final number until just a week or two ago, when budget book was passed out, so.
Okay.
Needs a closer look and that's one I'm willing to give it.
Got it. Commissioner Armman, sorry about that.
So to Commissioner Sacks's point, yes, you don't pay those wages all upfront, but neither do we get our revenue all upfront. I mean, our revenue comes in, you know, over the period of the whole year. Not everybody pays their, their ad verum taxes on, on day one, there are some that still haven't paid them for the years previously. So, you know, all of our income doesn't come at once, yes, all of our expenditures don't go out, but it's over the whole year that is budgeted. So, you know, we get sales tax on incremental time periods. We don't collect- We don't collect that all upfront. State's not gonna give it to you until they actually collect it and receive it and use it, you know? We've had two major infrastructure bridges that we've had to replace these last two years with no millage increase. You know, they're in these budgets. You, you know, those are big-ticket items. You know, last year we funded a new fire truck. That's, to my knowledge, never been done here. We've always borrowed money to buy a truck. But we funded one last year at that rate. So I think we've done a good job being fiduciary responsible to, to the people and using their money. And it's just that we're at the point that we can't continue that pattern going forward.
Good point, well said. Property values went up 14%. How can we take advantage of that? Our city's growing. People believe, oh, more, more growth, more taxes, less taxes for me to pay. Not true. You pay more taxes for, when we, when we grow. So we're having to grow, we're having to pay more taxes. I'm not looking to go to rollback, I'm looking for a compromise. I'm looking for, he, Collid had done that miracle once before. He sharpened that pencil and we got there and we agreed on something.
Well, but the point of this meeting is set, to set the cap.
Yeah, yeah.
The max.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, and I think with the budget workshop, I, there's stuff in, you can see all my little colored tags. There's stuff in my, my budget work.
I got some sticky tags.
That, you know, that I have questions about. And I, you know, and I want more information on. So I think at that meeting, we're gonna be able to maybe trim some of this out and maybe our final will be at a lower millage rate than this. This is simply setting the cap so that we can do our trim notice.
Yeah.
If, you know, we won't increase it, but we certainly can decrease it through the workshop sessions.
Yeah.
And the, and the two readings. So, and I know staff has heard all of us. So that sharpened pencil, you know, we were able to do some things last year and the year before. So, you know, they'll look at those things. But there's just some things that, that you're not gonna be able to help. I mean, when they prepared the budget, gas was approaching $6 a gallon. Gas has come back down. So maybe that's, you know, there's a cost savings there. But who knows what it's gonna be two months from now, you know? We, we have to fund this thing for a year in advance. And your tax rate is always, it's just a year behind, right? So whatever we do is gonna be a year behind before we ever actually receive that full amount of money. And that's why most cities, you know, who are fiduciarily responsible will have a reserve account for those types of things, those unintended, you know, things that come up. So I think this, this was a, it's a very good budget. I think it's a very reasonable budget. And I think this one that we can live with and we certainly can work on it come the workshop to see if there's any fat in there that can be trimmed out.
Fair enough.
Well, well said. We're gonna go to Collid and then we're gonna, Commissioner Hartman is right. Today we're just approving the max. I want to get some of this out, get the conversation going, involve the public in that as we, between now and August 18th, and then we'll see where we go then. So Collid, go ahead.
Mayor, I think it's, it was said, if it was a, a one-time expense, not a recurring expense, I think we could have sharpened the pencil more. But having the, the union contracts and having the $15 an hour, that's recurring of, uh, uh, expense that it's not something that I, I could play with. So if I raise the minimum wage to $15 and I have that salary, it's not something I could go back with. I have pointed out at that meeting when you, when you asked, I pointed out the $500,000 for the fire station. We were able to look at that property across from the fire station and thinking about paying that with the fire impact fees. I think that's gonna save us some money. You know, same thing with the, uh, with the, uh, the AOB site or the sidewalks. So we really tried hard to, to kind of maintain the, I guess, between the capital equipment and the capital projects to make sure that we have the project that the commission wants. And I remember Commissioner Sax, you're one of the first commissioners that we're promoting for the $15 an hour, if I recall. You were pushing hard for it. So that's why we got it in this budget, trying to get to the $15. I think we're just one of the few cities that I recall that they have not got to the $15. So having these contracts really made it very difficult for us because it's not a one-time expense to just get them out and lower the budget. And if that was the case, we would have done it before we even submitted to you. That's why I said in the beginning, it's very difficult for a city manager to sit on the dais and say, we are asking for increasing in taxes. That's the last thing you want to do. But sometimes I have to realize reality and make sure it's sustainable for years to come. Because I don't want the same thing to happen with the, with the solid waste. That is really not, that's not a good management to do in terms of whether it's the millage or the fees that we charge, to come back and have a big hit at one time. So we're doing it incrementally now and for the next two years, slightly increase the millage just to make it even. I mean, you look at the solid waste, you go 11.75 and you barely have anything in the reserve. So, uh, and I, I wish, uh, Commissioner Sax that I have the magic pencil. I could have done it before.
That's what I, I pictured you said that. I pictured that pencil just a little nub, just sharpened it as much as he can. Uh, all right, quick, quick question, then we're gonna just take some motions on this and get to the ordinance. Um, the solid waste, I see we've got a few of them here and we've got the stormwater. That's, is that a separate motion we need for that item or is that, how do we, how do we address that? Because I don't see it here. I see we have the two debts and then we have our operating and then we have stormwater.
She wants a separate motion for the solid waste.
Okay.
Then we'll bring it back to first public meeting as well.
Okay. All right, so that's a separate item. So we'll just need to take a separate motion on that. We'll just do that at the very, we'll do that after the, uh, the last of these. So with that, item 3A, Resolution 3522, proposing that the 2005 debt service rate not exceed 2.2176 mils. Do you have a motion on that item?
So move. Second.
City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sax?
Yes.
Commissioner Colodey?
No.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKirk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
3622, adoption of the 2018 debt service shall not exceed .1130 mils. Do you have a motion on that item?
Motion to approve 3622. Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Colodey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKirk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sax?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
And 3722, which is the, uh, operating maximum millage. Operating maximum should not exceed 3.9641 mils. Do you have a motion on that item?
So move. Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKirk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sax?
Yes.
Commissioner Colodey?
No.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then if we can, would someone propose a motion on the solid waste? Just pick one of these numbers or fill in your own number.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, 10% year two and, and three and four CPI.
Oh, oh, we want the 11.75.
Yes, we want 11.75.
We wanted to go with the 11.75 to break even. So that's the, uh, option at the bottom.
Is that acceptable to the motion maker or did you want to stick to the 10?
Did you, you want the 20% year two and the four?
No, no, no. This, this bottom option, yeah, 11.75.
You got the old book.
Yeah, that's the, yeah, it's in that other one. Yeah.
Yeah. Motion to approve the 11.75 year two and 4% CPI. Thank you.
And really, we're just approving this year. We can't approve next year. All right, do I have a second to that motion?
Question, question. So we're only approving the 11.75 this year?
And 4% for the.
Yes.
Because, um, Waste Pro have CPI 4% in their contract already. So you will have 11.75 and then you'll have 4% thereafter.
But we can't really approve that sitting here today. That's some future commissioner will approve whatever they approve for solid waste then. They could choose to do zero, they could choose to do a million, right?
Yeah, they could change it. But I'm just saying for now, I think that's what, in order to keep it even.
So we're really just approving the 11.75 this year?
Okay.
Yeah. So the motion was to approve 11.75, uh, on the solid waste increase for this year.
Second.
Add a second to that. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor McKirk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sax?
Yes.
Commissioner Colodey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then last of these, I think I didn't get to the stormwater one yet, right?
Motion to approve Resolution 3822.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
City Clerk?
Vice Mayor McKirk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sax?
Yes.
Commissioner Colodey?
No.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Collid, Natalia, are we good with all of those? Okay. All right. Next two items are related to the, uh, ordinance 3322 and 3422. City Attorney will read the ordinance the second time by title only for 3820, 3322, sorry.
Ordinance number 3322, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the land development regulations, amending Article 5 zoning districts, Section 50402, specific regulations by district. I-1, light industrial district. I-2, heavy industrial district. I-3, industrial park district. And I-4, waterfront industrial district. By removing the noise regulations to allow for comprehensive noise regulations in the city code, providing for codification, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Okay. I think you've got a report for us, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, so staff's been instructed to review the current land development regulation as it pertains acceptable noise levels in the city's industrial zoning districts. So staff did do a review on the noise regulation from other jurisdictions to get a baseline of what currently is existing, including Volusia County. So with the help of the departments, including the Building Department, the Code Compliance Office, the City Attorney's Office, we decided to remove the existing regulation that was located in the industrial zoning districts and place a new regulation in the code of ordinance so that that new regulation would be citywide and not dependent of a zoning district. So staff has proposed a regulation submitted to the commission for review. The second ordinance would be actually where the new noise ordinance would be placed and we also included a light ordinance. So would that subject any questions that the commission may have?
So go ahead, we're just, let's, let's talk through it all here at once and then we'll go there. So you can, you can go and speak to 3422 as well and then we'll, because they're kind of, they're, they're, they're connected.
They're relying on each other. If you vote on the first one, then it, it goes away. We gotta have something in this.
Exactly, yeah. So just go ahead and address 34 and then we'll, then we'll vote on them.
Okay, so basically with 3422, um, staff did a review based on, like I said, the other, the cities in the county. We had the City Attorney's Office involved. So we did expand the noise ordinance. Uh, the decibel levels that we listed are compatible to, close related to what's already in the county regulation. Uh, the current related regulation we had was kind of hard to understand with the decibel levels. So with the new proposed, uh, regulation, it would be a lot more simpler. It also explains definitions of how it's to be determined and what type of device would have to be used and who actually would enforce that. So we would have the police department and course code compliance officers would enforce that. So the decibel levels are, there is a table in the new regulation and it sets for the use occupancy. That use occupancy is the receiving of the noise. So where it says residential, commercial, manufacturing, industrial, agriculture, and then of course noise sensitive zones, we created a noise sensitive zone. That'd be your hospitals, your ALFs. But if you're a residential district and you're boarding the commercial or industrial district, we set those decibel levels where there would be the maximum allowed receiving in that residential from whatever that other operation is. We also listed a, um, an exception so that if it's, if, if you're abeying to the nighttime, then the daytime, we would allow you to extend another five decibels, uh, for that, that business or, or industrial use that's adjacent to a residential district.
Run, run that by me again, if you're what and then to the nighttime?
So if you abide by the nighttime and you have a daytime operation and your operation was basically there prior to the residential operation, then we give you an additional 5% level of decibel up, right?
Not percent.
Five, five dB.
Five dBs.
Yes.
Yeah, I got you.
So what we set was for residential, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM would be a decibel level of 60. And then from 10:00 PM to 7:00 PM, it'd be reduced to 50. So if you're a residential property, that's the decibel level that would be reaching to your property. That'd be the maximum level. For commercial, we have it listed 65. The daytime would be 55 at night. Manufacturing at all times or agriculture or industrial would be at 75. That'd be what they're receiving from outside onto their property. And then noise sensitive zones at all times were set at, at 55. So in that new ordinance, there's a lot of definitions. There's a lot of exemptions. A lot of those exemptions follow the exemptions that are already on the books for the county, like emergency signals, emergency sirens, trains, planes, uh, special events. If you have a permit to be able to create noise, which is something that would be approved at this level when people apply for their special event permit, then they would be exempt as well if it's part of their special event permit. Now, none of us, or I am not, an engineer when it comes to noise. So we did some research and so basically what they consider as, like for welders and sanders, we're talking about a decibel level of 90. So that's a level that they're producing on their property. But what's that decibel level when it finally reaches to the residential property? So basically every so many feet, so every 25 feet, that decibel gets reduced by six. So if I'm running the grinder and I'm at, say, 80, then 25 feet away, that decibel's no more at 80, you reduce it by six. So now, and then when you go another, when you double that to, say, 50 feet, you lose another six decibels. So by the time that you get, say, 100 feet away from where that operation is that's creating that noise, the decibel reduces by the time it gets to that, say, that residential district. So what we're saying is, at the residential district, it should be at 60 or it could be 65 if you meet that exemption for the additional five decibels, which would be equivalent to what is allowed right now in the county. So such any questions that the commission may have me? I do have a handouts for everybody so they can understand what a decibel level is. We did get some professional graphs. Like I said, I'm not a, an engineer.
Okay. So I had a, a couple of questions. So first acknowledging that we have, we have some challenges in this city not created by anyone, probably in this room. Honestly, they were long before our time. We have, you know, some, some heavy commercial districts that are directly abutted to residential. Um, you know, Flagler Canal area, I'm thinking. We have an industrial center that's right in the middle of a residential complex, which defies all land planning, you know, standards, uh, from today. It would never be approved by this board today, but it is what it is. We are who we are. So my, my question for you, Bob, as best you can intuit with the changes we're making. So let's take, for instance, industrial. So right now, as it sits today, for an industrial zone that abuts residential, what is the, the dBs that could be produced by the industrial and/or received by the residential? Like what is the current standard today?
So it looks like the current standard would be a decibel of 65 and that would be for 20 to 75 seconds.
Okay, so right now the limit is 65?
Yes.
So for them to produce or for the residential to receive or both?
Right. And that's only in their industrial zone, that's not a citywide decibel?
Um, I, that's not, yeah.
Right. So with the plus five, it went to seventy-four. So my understanding, when you look at the existing in the I-two, it was sixty-nine plus five, so it, it pertains to the nighttime hours?
That's correct. I was looking at the night, the different, the nighttime. So the daytime is correct. She's correct, it would be sixty-nine, plus the five would be?
So right now, today, that would be sixty-nine plus five, seventy-four decibels that an industrial site could produce, that would be potentially received by residential. So right now, today, we're at seventy-four, and we're going to sixty plus five, potentially?
Correct.
Sixty-five?
Correct.
That's a net improvement. Okay.
I think if you're the residential occupancy, it's an improvement.
If you're the residential occupancy, it's an improvement. If you're the industrial, the standard just got raised a little bit, so. And then for, uh, let's take like a commercial corridor like Flagler. So let's take, you know, a business on Flagler that has live music or something like that. What is the standard today, and then what would this potentially change?
Well, the current regulation that we had in the LDR was only for industrial districts. So in the LDR, we did not have any noise ordinance against commercial properties. There may, there was probably some in the Code of Ordinance that maybe Carrie will be able to answer, but it was none in the LDR.
Got it.
Correct. So I think the confusion that's coming in is, our existing Code of Ordances are not changing. So when you look at, um, thirty-eight seventy-three, sub-three, we talk about these general prohibitions, which talks about, um, musical instruments, radios, CD players, other electronics. And during ten PM to eight AM, nothing has changed. If it's plainly audible at a distance of twenty-five feet or more, it's prima facie evidence of a violation. So that's something Barb has, um, enforced regularly, and there's no changes to that. So what's back in Table One, and it specifically says that, these are two separate things. So Table One deals with, it's the noise from the use itself. Whereas, a bar with the radio playing, you know, that's not inherent with like pouring drinks. Or, so, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I guess the point I wanted to, to, to drive home is that this isn't raising, it, it is raising the standard for an industrial site near a residential area, or just near anything really. And it is not changing effectively. There's some other things I'm gonna address, but from a decibel standpoint, it is not changing the standard for an establishment on Flagler, be it existing or new, and what they can or can't do as of today.
Correct.
Okay. I've got some things I want to see changed to this, I've got some ideas, but I'm just, those are my questions for Bob. So I'll open it up, any other questions of staff or comments for staff?
Uh, just some comments, um, good, good clarification. In, in the I, in the industrial, we're, we're reducing the amount of decibels that are gonna be allowable. I think there was just a lot of confusion about this from a lot of people, including myself. Initially, I'll certainly raise my hand on that. So, I know a number of groups and organizations have, um, expressed concern, primarily as I've spoken to them over the last two days. It was more of a, it's a misunderstanding, more of not understanding it, as opposed to being against it. So, you know, I, I think it was fairly easy for us to comprehend this tonight, sitting here. I'm, so, I'm, I, I'm comfortable with postponing this if we need to, just so we can talk to some of the people out in the community who, who, who are not sure, not understanding this. I think I got a pretty good grip on it now. I'm comfortable with it going out and explaining to people who reached, who reached out to me about it. Certainly like to get with you and speak with you about it, and we can talk about it. So I'm comfortable do, postponing it, just so we don't run into the, the, the fear of people, um, not perpetuating what may be a perception of, we kind of sprung it, and there's a lot of concern about it. So, um, that's my thoughts.
Okay. Any other comments? Go ahead.
So in the, in the old language that dealt with industrial zoning, there also was a thing in there about vibrations. So we're gonna completely eliminate that, or will that still be?
We're, what we're looking to remove is this, the, just the section, I believe, that deals with the actual noise. So the vibration, which, under each one of them, which I'm looking at I-one, number one is the vibration, that's not being removed out. It's gonna be the second paragraph, number two, that deals with noise, sound, level management. That's been stricken, and it just refers to the Code of Ordinance, which is the section that we're providing.
So we still have some greater restrictions on those industrial zoned areas? But the noise and the light are gonna go to a separate ordinance?
Correct. So if somebody was looking at this LDR, looking for what's noise, they would see the Code of Ordinance section. They could go to that section, it would then give them that, that regulation, which is in municipal code, just like the LDR is.
And some of these things for benefit, I guess, you know, those that are here for this, that, some of these are, they, they've come up, and some of these, they haven't been touched in a long time. And they come up because of some, some issue, and there's a couple of them at play in this case, I'm gonna speak to another one in a minute. And so it leads our staff, today's staff, to look at it. And when they do, just like if you all run a business or anything else, you look at it, you go, oh, man, this hasn't been touched in a long time. It doesn't really make sense, it's confusing as, you know, as I'll get out. So, let's clean it up, let's make it right. And, and that does lead oftentimes to, we get a million phone calls that, oh, you're changing, you know, what, where did this come from? Why are you changing this? And a lot of times, it's not that we're trying to radically change it, we're just trying to make it much simpler for us, for our staff, for even the residents in the businesses. So, um, I think this is truly one of those cases where it's a net fairly neutral, probably some improvements, uh, to, to residents, maybe, maybe a little bit higher standards on certain businesses. Uh, for the most part, fairly, fairly neutral to everyone, though, in some ways. And again, I want to come back to a couple of things. Any comments or, or questions for staff over here?
Oh, question?
Sure.
Bob, how, how do you address, now that we have in industrial zones assemblies of up to seven hundred people, how the noise ordinance affects them? Because usually when they assemble, it's going to be a party of sorts.
Right. Well, we currently have a noise ordinance for ten, ten PM. So, under this Code of Ordinance, it's still got a ten o'clock basic curfew for, for noise. Once you get below that, the decibels become reduced. So like, basically what, when we looked at, seeing what the county had, they normally had sixty. They also had up to ten percent of that could be done. But then after ten o'clock, it was reduced down to fifty-five. So for our regulation, we're looking to do a reduction as well. Get that page. So we're looking at the base being at sixty, and then it would be reduced to fifty after ten PM. From ten to seven. Though we still have a restriction after ten PM.
And it also depends on what kind of noise we're talking. So if it's like amplified noise, then you're back to the beginning of the, you know, in the beginning about audible twenty-five feet, you know?
Right. So if it's a higher, let's say right now, they're allowed to, would be allowed to do sixty decibels. That's receiving at the residential zoned property. So wherever that commercial or industrial property is that that noise has come from, the further the distance away, the reduced that decibel becomes. And so that's where the chart tells you, every six feet, it reduces, or every, every, if, the first twenty-five feet reduces six decibels, then you double that to fifty, it's another six, you double that to a hundred, that's another six. So if somebody's now at seventy decibels, by the time they get, say, a hundred feet away, that decibel's gonna be reduced. So if they call, and somebody's out there taking a meter, wherever that meter is required, take this, that decibel could be reduced by the time that they pull the meter out to see what it is. If they stood at the door at the commercial property, that decibel, of course, is gonna be higher. It's all about who's receiving the decibels, is where the limits we're trying to pursue.
I was just wondering how enforceable this is, and, um, have, have we determined what the fines would be if somebody gets caught?
That's already in our own, that's right.
Yeah. I believe when the law enforcement officer writes the ticket, it's a hundred and three dollars. There's two different avenues. You can either go through the code enforcement, or through a law enforcement officer. So I believe through the law enforcement officer, it's a hundred and three dollar fine. Um, code enforcement, those are set by statute, the maximum fines, and then the board or the magistrate would set the fine.
But that process currently is existing now.
Yeah, none of that's changing. Yeah.
So, one of the things that we did add in here was the classification of measurement standards. So we did put a standard of the minimum tool that we have to use to calculate that.
Do you think they're more enforceable where they would remain in the Code of Ordances?
If it's in the Code, Code of Ordinance, it's citywide. So it doesn't matter what the individual zoning district's all about, the use. So, we, uh, I think, originally, we were looking to put it in the LDR, but I think because it was gonna be a citywide change, the Code of Ordinance is more of a citywide. So that's why we chose to, to put it there. And so we did list a type of, uh, meter. So they have to use a type-two or better sound meter, that's prescribed by the Nat, American National Standards Institute. So we do have a threshold of what the meter, minimum meter to be used by either a police officer or code enforcement officer. So now it spells out exactly the decibel, it's not, I think it's gonna be too loud.
Okay. Mr. Colleti?
No, I've reviewed the, uh, regulations, and I fully support them. I think they take something that's old, and had a lot of questions with it, and provide some of the answers. I do agree with, uh, Commissioner McGurk, that it seems that a couple of our, uh, our business associations were caught off guard by this, which often happens. Uh, I would like to see this put off, uh, till next meeting. And, uh, I will contact those organizations and tell them to speak to our staff. And that way, they can be fully prepared to appear before us next time around.
Okay.
Motion?
Before we do that, I just, I had a couple of things I wanted to, to introduce and make sure everybody was okay with, um, possibly changing, that I saw. Uh, and I don't, I have no problem with delaying it as well. One of the things that I hoped that we would be, that this would give us some more tools in the tool belt to address, not that we would get a hundred percent, you know, compliance, because you're never gonna get that with speeding or anything else. But, you know, there's this new trend due to new technology of these super loud radio systems in cars. Do you have a comment on that? I've already talked to you, so go ahead.
So, um, currently, we have standards in place for speakers. So the concern was, we had this, um, it had to be continuous for five minutes. The continuous for five minutes has been moved to a different section so that it's only applying to the Table One when we're talking about the conflicting uses. It's not going to apply to, um, the, the general prohibitions. So it will apply to the car driving by, even if it's just for a second, the police officer hears it, they can follow them. So one, we have it in our code. Two, this legislative session with the special events bill that was passed, there had been, um, some case law that called into question the plainly audible standard. So they did address that and made some amendments to the Florida statute. So we'll, there's some debate about whether they actually fixed it or not, but city attorneys are moving forward with enforcing it under state law. So we have both options available to us. Um, so that tool is there for our law enforcement, for those loud speakers that are
Okay.
Driving by.
Gotcha. All right. So I, so we, we, there was provision, City Attorney and I had talked about, about the five-minute thing. So I wanted to make sure that we had addressed that, so it sounds like we did.
Yes. So before, when we continue this, we'll publish with the, um, the cleaned-up version that I made with the comments that I heard from everybody.
Okay.
So, hold on, make sure I understand. So you wanna, you want that added in, or, or it isn't?
I've worked on it since this agenda published, which I've distributed to you all, but there was one last tweet that was made. You got it, just because you were the last briefing, so, but everyone will get that, yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So, yeah, so basically between tonight's version and the continuance, which is another reason I'm supporting, there's a couple of other things that I'd asked them to look at. Because there was a provision about, it, it had to be a five-minute continuous. And I'm like, well, I want to address those loud radios, or at least have the option to. And if it's a five-minute continuous, like, it's not gonna be, I mean, some of them are, but most of them, it's a drive-by. Um, so my hope would be with this provision, the other state stuff, that we would have some targeted enforcement things on that. I saw it a ton during spring break, it's becoming more and more of an occurrence. You know, my, my hope is that we get the word out that, hey, in New Smyrna Beach, they'll, they'll bust you for that. They, you know, we do some, whatever operation looks like. I sat on the, I sat there at Third Way drinking a cup of coffee, and I watched, you know, fifteen cars drive by, that if I, if I had a radio, and I could just radio to somebody up the road and said, hey, the black Mazda pulling over, you know, like, I'd love to just see one of those operations, just where we'd ride a slew of tickets.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that you were, you were advocating for it.
Yes, a hundred percent.
Just wanted to clarify.
Hundred percent, yeah. The, the other one was, um, the, the sworn statement. Carrie, you and I talked about this, there was a provision in there about the, it could come from either code enforcement, law enforcement, or a sworn statement by basically anyone. I worry about that being a little bit weaponized, if I'm totally honest. Um, because Carrie and I talked about this quite a bit, and it's like, well, I could make a sworn statement against my neighbor that, hey, they had a loud party, and it was definitely, I could hear it plainly from my house. Well then, you know, the neighbor has to then go fight it, and it could be weaponized in a bad neighbor situation. And, and I, to me, if that's what we're trying to deal with, call law enforcement, call code enforcement, have them come out. If it's a recurring issue with a business, or a bad neighbor, I don't necessarily want neighbors, I don't know that I want to take just a sworn statement from a neighbor. So I would suggest that we strike that part, and if it becomes a problem, we could always add it back in. But I just, I, I see that being weaponized in our community, and I, I, I would rather avoid that personally.
So, so let me get, let me, let me ask this. Uh, I have an issue, it's, it's after, after hours, let's say on a weekend. Obviously, I'm not calling code enforcement, if I'm an average citizen, I don't have a direct line. I'm gonna call the police, right?
Non-emergency, yeah.
Yeah. Depends. How much of an emergency that is, right? What, the police come, are they gonna look at me and say, you know, take it up with code enforcement? Or do they make some kind of report, give the, what is the proper procedure for dealing with that, other than, you know, well, I can't go arrest them, what do you want me to do?
So the police officer can find them. They can issue a ticket for a hundred and three dollars, which is often what happens on Flagler.
On-site?
On-site.
Okay. Good. Fantastic. Now, let me ask you these exemptions for emerg, emergency alarms, car alarms and stuff like that. And I'm just kind of shooting from the limb, I don't, so I don't want to spend a, I can follow up with you later. But, um, I, historically, I've been told that, at an emergency alarm, someone can't be fined for it going off. Problem is, sometimes these pe, these things will go off over and over and over, and unintended, uh, uh, there's no emergency. There's just, there's a hiccup, and a lot of, we get these on US One, a lot on these car lots, right? They just go off every thirty seconds for a minute. And it'll shut off for thirty seconds, and then it goes off again for a minute. And so, there's something I'll follow up with you later on about this, but I just wanted to put that bug in the ear, if there's something we can possibly do about that in the future.
Well, if three of you nod your heads, I'll tweak that language to make it clear that it's not, um, repetitive car alarms?
Well, no, I'm saying, can we do that with car alarms, or any other?
So, the way it reads right now, the exemption is for if the noise or sound emanates from authorized safety signals, warning devices, or any authorized emergency vehicle when responding to an emergency call or acting in time of emergency. So the, I read it, the intent would be police, ambulance, that, not a person's car?
Right.
And, and I think that's where the five-minute thing comes in, too, that if...
Which it doesn't imply in that section.
For, oh, it doesn't?
No. It only applies to the...
I got you. Because to me, that's one of those things where, yeah, I bet, look, we've all had, you know, eleven o'clock in your car, and you hit the button, you know, ten seconds. But you're talking about a different, like a recurring.
Yeah, well, the exact kind of instance is, it's a problem, and the response from the businesses, I'll come Monday morning is when I come into work, could be Friday night, Saturday.
Yeah.
Now, let, let, let me, let me back this off, let me back off this. I'm starting to hijack this conversation in two directions. So let me not worry about, let, let's, let's, let's back away from that.
Okay, so just going back to the sworn complaint, is the Commission in agreement to remove that language? All right, I see three head nods. So, prior to publication, that language will be removed. Um, and you'll see the revision that moves the continuous five minutes so that it's only applicable to the Table One, which, which deals with the conflicting land users.
Okay. And then, to be clear, if, if, if you all chat, and you come, I mean, that sounds like a pretty unique thing, so I agree, we may not solve it today. But if you come up with language, and you bring a proposed language to that, that maybe we could easily strike once we all see it, you know, I'm okay with hearing if you have a solution to that. It sounds like a pretty nuanced problem, but if, if we can solve it, or at least give us the tool in the tool belt, I'm okay hearing about it, and we can see if three others agree. If not, we could just strike that during the second reading, so. Uh, okay. So, uh, Carrie, do we need a motion to continue these? I assume we do.
Yes, to preserve the ad, we need two motions.
What date do you need that to be, too?
Uh, you want to do August ninth or the twenty-third?
I would like to have staff meet with the, uh, business association on Flagler and Canal.
Yep.
So if we could just continue it possibly to the second meeting in August, I think that would be, give us some time to meet with them.
What's the date?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, August twenty-seventh. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to continue ordinance thirty-three twenty-two?
I will make that motion.
Okay, is it the twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, I'm sorry.
To August twenty-third, for clarity. So the motion was to postpone till August twenty-third? And I have a second, that was accepted with a second, or? City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Do we have a motion to, uh, postpone ordinance thirty-four twenty-two to August twenty-third?
So move.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Colleti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Thank you all. So we'll have some more conversations in the community about those, and then get those buttoned up. Gentlemen, that is all the business that was in front of us today, we do have a point for commission comments, any comments from the commission today? Commissioner Clody?
At our last meeting, the one that started at around four o'clock and went till around 11 o'clock, at the end of that meeting, I had asked that the commission schedule in the, our discussion segment, traffic control in the South Mainland area, that conversation or that request got sidetracked by other commissioners and did not go forward. We are going to have an item for additional speed control in South Riverside, and I would like to include that entire area as part of that discussion, because we've done this piecemeal in the past and we, I had a community meeting with about 100 people in it that one commissioner attended, and they're all waiting to get some input on what we're going to do.
Okay.
Can we do that? Can we schedule a date?
As, as a, so we have this, the other one coming back to us already on a future agenda?
It is coming.
Okay.
I don't know the date.
You don't know what it's, I got you. And you're proposing just a separate focus just on South Mainland traffic control, so the magnolia?
It would be part of the same discussion because it's the same area.
But just, but just broaden it versus just having that one agenda item, you're saying just have a broader discussion.
Yes, instead of two.
It's the commission's pleasure. I mean, if we're going to talk about one, we probably should talk about all, put it that way. I'm, I'm kind of-
I will be, so.
So.
My only concern is if we're going to have staff input, would that give them enough time to, to do an evaluation of the entire area as opposed to all the work that they've already done on that one street?
I provided information to Kyle, our engineer, he has it all, I will call him and say, yes, we're going to talk about it, he, he didn't think it would be a problem. I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but.
Okay. And we, and we don't know the time, I mean, we can give staff time, we can say, let's do this in September.
He's on vacation, so I think he'll be back next week, so.
So what, so I'm okay with doing this, but I would say it has to be December. I'm just kidding.
The second meeting in November.
I'm not asking for a specific date, I'm asking that the subject be broadened, that's coming before us anyhow, whenever it's regularly scheduled to come.
I, I agree with that.
I, I, it's fine, I, I mean, I'll go along with it, I think we've just made, we keep making a mess of this.
Yep.
But let's keep going.
Let's listen to what they have to say, including Kyle and the neighbors.
I've always listened to what they have to say.
Well, that's what we're trying to get to that goal.
Yeah.
The problem is, we listen to the residents and we listen to the experts and they never have agreed, and most of the times they're going with the residents instead of the experts, and so I feel like we just keep digging a hole, but. Any other commission comments? Commissioner Clody?
None, no, that's it.
Any other commission comments for tonight?
Is this the appropriate night?
I don't know. Maybe not. Maybe, um.
Maybe not. No, I just, you know, we have conditions on beachside that are, that are getting really dangerous and that is speeding traffic. You know, the chief wants to help, he doesn't have enough manpower, we just got two motors for you and we hope they run a lot and stop the speeders, because that seems to be part of the problem on Riverside, South Mainland, Mike has inherited it and he, and he finds also traffic speeding up through Edgewater, they have the same problem in Edgewater. So we know Farmington's coming, can we do something in preparation for the even more hordes that will visit New Smyrna Beach? I know you've got a corridor that, to watch out for 444 that you guys here.
I'm not sure where you're at, Farmington's not coming for a couple decades.
Well, they're starting to build out west anyway.
You just questioned the budget, what exactly are you asking for? I'm confused, right now, you say, can we, what do you want?
Have the discussions that Mike was talking about and have substantive, substantive discussions.
I'll make a deal with you. I'll make any, I'll have any, I'll make-
I'm afraid to make a deal with you, but I'll listen.
I'll have any discussion you want, but when you want stuff and then you vote no for the budget, I might become a little prickly. So don't ask for stuff and then we spend a lot of time on it and you like it in the, during the discussion, and then when the budget time comes up, you get, you start backing off. So that's the, that's the deal I made with you. We talk about it, don't go getting too prickly about wanting to not deal with it in the budget. Don't make it sound warm and fuzzy and not blow the pole trick.
Well, Vice Mayor, I, you know, we're not trying to get prickly, we're trying to save lives and protect our residents, so, you know, I've been trying for a long time, we butted heads on it, so be it, but at the same time, I don't think we spent that much money on public safety, traffic safety in, in particular.
That's why we're trying to increase the budget.
And we didn't, we didn't hurt the budget last time either, and we may be able to do that this time with inexpensive hardware to do that.
With any hope we will pass a budget that will deal with exactly what you're concerned about.
Well, maybe we can come to a compromise.
All right, I think we're, I think we're going to have that discussion from Commissioner Clody, if we expand that beyond South Mainland, I mean, some of these problems are, you know, these are, these are tough issues. Any comments, any additional comments? For sure.
So I can personally attest to traffic enforcement on Riverside.
Uh-oh.
She didn't take it. Yes. I was going a little too fast. So they're out there and they will catch you, so, you know, that's all I can say. But for those of you who haven't noticed, if you look at the utilities commission's new logo and their new branding, I think it's pretty amazing, so if you haven't had a chance to look at that yet, you know, just go to their website, it's a really cool logo and, you know, they've kind of rebranded their name, and my hats are off to them because, I mean, it really caught my eye the first time I saw it, so.
Which, which now is it called, what's, it's not the utilities commission, they're, they're calling it what now? Because that was confusing. I thought they changed it from, they took something out, I thought it was the commission part.
Yeah.
It just doesn't-
I'm in a bit of a-
I mean, even their logo is-
Yeah, no, I agree, yeah, that's good.
You know, the little sun with the beach looking at them, it was pretty cool, so.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. I had two things, nothing major, I know this isn't, you know, a normal meeting, one is, just wanted to make sure nobody had any issues. We often get requests, they usually come through me or, or the city clerk for proclamations, but I know you all get some as well, some of those can be quite time consuming for city clerk as we do them now, because we often try to do kind of a full-fledged, you know, write-up about whatever it is. I've proposed, unless someone opposes it with the city clerk, that for a lot of these, and I've got one that was a request for 99th birthday, these are all just feel-good things that, you know, I'd love to be able to accommodate, but I don't necessarily want to task our city clerk with going and getting the whole life story and writing the whole thing, so I've proposed that we do a proclamation, a version of a proclamation that is almost like a certificate where it's, you know, maybe landscape format, hereby proclaiming in honor of so-and-so, you know, a brief sentence or two where we basically fill in the blank, I sign or whoever, even if it's one of you all that request it because one of your citizens wants something, we could put these out much more, it's, it's free goodwill for us, the citizens love it, and it takes some work off of them, so we could do more of them with less effort. So I think it's a win-win. Obviously, for those that come to the commission or for bigger things, we would still do the more traditional full, full-blown proclamation, I would call it, so any, any ideas or thoughts on that, or any objections to, to that approach? Hearing none. I feel Jason wants to say something, but he's trying to hold us tight. Go ahead.
I don't want to push a lot of the proclamations into this, but for the example you're giving, like a birthday?
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it. But I think it's important, proclamations have always served as important goodwill between the city and its residents, so when it comes to a birthday, I, I, I think it really, really has to do with, um, the more I, the more, the more I, the more I think about it, the less I like it, simply because how do you regulate, if we can, if maybe we pick a few things?
Yeah.
As opposed to being, I guess my problem is, how subjective is it?
Yeah.
If we can actually create a certain, like, if you notice a trend where there are a lot of, like, birthdays, we can give, create something for, say, birthdays and a few other things that take up a lot of time.
Yeah.
But I think it's, as much as a, you know, a kind of a pain in the butt it might be, or very time-consuming. It's a special kind of-
That's a good point, the one thing I'll add, I'll come to you in a second, the one thing I'll add is, so there's a couple of categories, birthdays, you know, we've tried to do a lot more with proclamations for, you know, like student accomplishments at the high school when they, they make a district or go to state, so we're honoring some student, well, they don't have a lot of history, like, you know, there's not a lot to fill in the proclamation there, so it's more of like, hey, we're just acknowledging this, we're honoring it, but we don't have a whole story to tell.
A city recognition, but not a proclamation.
So, yeah, maybe it's even a different name, maybe it's a city recognition of an accomplishment instead of a proclamation.
I like the idea of presenting it like that and maybe we can come up with a, not a hard list, but a general guideline list.
And there's some subjectivity I would add even to proclamations, I mean, I will tell you, there's, there's ones that, you know, between city clerk and I, we talk about it and we, you know, we, we don't do, and I, my guiding theme has been, is it relevant to New Smyrna? So if it's some national organization just wanting us to proclaim it because, you know, it's whatever, and it's, they don't even have a presence in our community, we're not about that, I'm like, we're not going to spend the time, some of them are even controversial, it's not worth it. If it's a national organization that has a big presence in our community, obviously we've, we've done those, there's subjectivity to, does it get read here, or does it just get delivered by one of us to their organization? I've offered many times, I would say, hey, I'm willing to do the proclamation and I'll come to your service or come to whatever event and deliver it, or maybe that commissioner would, but it's not going to be for here, so I think there's always going to be some subjectivity here, I'm just trying to make it a little easier. Honestly, I'd like to do more of them, but I don't want to task staff with a lot more work, so go ahead.
So I, I think one of the things that we did when we disbanded a couple of our groups is we, there's, isn't there a general focus group that you were looking to establish, maybe five or six people? Maybe that may be a, a way to do that, because there's a lot of great people in the community that have background in PR, you know, and things like that, and maybe they could help and kind of do some citizen input into what other, you know, what other people do, I, I mean, I don't know if you want to go that far, if you're looking for a, a quick fix?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to make it, I'm trying to make it simple and not more complicated, I'm just trying to make it as simple as possible, and again, just, this is an example that came up yesterday when I opened the mail, obviously I wanted to do this, but I, I felt bad tasking staff with, you know, I just, I didn't, you know, so.
I think it's separate.
I like that, actually, yeah, yeah.
For, and kind of, again, not a hard list, but.
Yeah.
Like a letter of appreciation or, you know, a letter of acknowledgement.
I'll talk to city clerk, she'll talk to each of you individually, see what we come up with, if you want to bring it back up here, that's fine. The other thing was, I've mentioned this before, I don't know when the right time to discuss it is, probably at the workshops, I'm just kind of putting it on y'all's radar for that August 18th workshop. You mentioned it, one of the two of you all mentioned it, I can't remember who, that a, a lot of our staff are below market, we, we've tried to work on that with, you know, the various things we've done, we've addressed it for some, we have three staff that report directly to us, they are also below market, definitely city manager and city attorney, so I plan to bring that up at our August 18th workshop with a proposal of addressing some of those, and again, we can either do it now or later, we can do it, you know, some future commission will do it in August of 2024 when Kyle retires and they go to market and they realize we're way behind market, or we can go ahead and start phasing into that now, same with city attorney, we can sit back, let her eventually say, you know what, I've had enough, I can go double my salary somewhere else, and then we'll, we're going to pay whatever market rate is at that time, or we can do what we need to do to keep, neither of them have approached me, neither of them have, you know, said, do this or else, to me, this is our job as, as leadership and as management to proactively stay on top of this, and I think HR sent the data to all of us a few weeks back or maybe a month or more back, I'll have that recirculated, it shows where they are compared to, to many other cities, and we, we have city managers and city attorneys of much, much smaller organizations that are paid above what ours are currently, so.
Yeah, because when I was going over the information that Heather had sent out before, even with the compaction or the 3%, there, I mean, we're still below the average.
Yeah.
You know, on some, even the smaller cities are ahead of us, so I would, certainly would support that.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll bring it up on August 18th, but just wanted to put it on your radar in case you all wanted to have your own conversations with staff or, or whoever else, so. If there's no other items?
One, there is, just one more thing, gentlemen, since we're almost at a regular meeting, I'd like to bring about motion, maybe Vice Mayor McGurk and I might agree, I would hope we could agree on something. The folks were very passionate about the park at Francis, as if it had been their park for approximately 50 years, and we had considered selling it, we decided not to because of their passionate pleas to keep it, and I saw the park and I said, my God, what a great asset for the neighborhood, would you consider tasking staff to take a look at it, so maybe we could declare it as a park someday for that neighborhood to have as green space, just passive green space.
I think that's on a future agenda, or going to be on a future agenda, I think we've got some discussions swirling on that, so.
All right.
Yeah, I think it's coming back to us. I don't know when yet, yeah, go ahead, go.
The, been trying to schedule the workshop, the half-day workshop for the commission, so with so many, I guess, either been on vacation or, or, so I'm trying to have the commission overall to be there. It looked like I talked to the city clerk today in either the 30th or the 31st of August. I was hoping to have it before the budget workshop, but that's not going to work, but at least I will have it before the first public hearing, so do you have any preference on either August 30th or 31st?
So remind me, this is for what again?
This is our quarterly for the commission workshop, half-day workshop, and we have so many items such as the 120 Flagler, AOB, the parking issue, so.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it seems like I cannot do it during a city commission meeting because it needs a lot of discussion, so half-day workshop, either the 30th or the 31st.
Are we talking about morning half-day or evening?
It's, you tell me what's, what half-day, it doesn't matter, you could do it from nine to one or from one to five.
Earlier is easier for me, nine to one is easier for me.
It's a, it's a Tuesday or Wednesday.
The day doesn't matter to me, but the morning works better.
I prefer the 30th.
The 30th?
Morning or night's fine.
Okay. 30th?
I, I think I'm in, as of right now, I'm in town both those days.
You're in town?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I can accommodate. You said morning is better? Yeah, I can accommodate morning.
Okay, so the 30th?
Did you?
31st is better for me, but I'll, if everybody else is good with the 30th, I'll be there.
So the 30th from nine to one.
I think that worked for everybody, not ideal for, for sure.
Thank you.
The, Kyle, did we need to talk about the, the, the budget meeting? The date for that?
Well, the budget meeting, as I mentioned during the briefings, right now is scheduled for September 14th. now is scheduled for September fourteenth. However, Commissioner Clodie and Commissioner, um, Hartman, between September first and